Need order for County Council, open work session, May 17th, 2023. The first item we have on the agenda is with the Board of Education. And I see everybody here. Good to have you all. Yes, please. Make sure that when you talk, you can try to clear mic if you have to. We're sorry, we only have something to go around. And we can start with introductions from the left. Gene, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us in. I'm Gene Malone, Chairman of the Board of Education. I have with me member Bonnie Ennis. And then I'll let Dr. Stoffler introduce the rest.
Sure. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having us. Micah Stoffler, Superintendent of Schools.
Good afternoon, everyone. Brian Reger, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Pam Olin, Finance Director for the County.
Good afternoon, Jesse Reed, Controller.
And we also have Liesel Ashby with us, Director of Planning and Construction Facilities. So just wanted to start by saying thank you so much for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to be able to have this opportunity and explain a little bit about where we are with our budget request for local funding. Mr. Reed's going to go into more detail, but we just wanted to have the opportunity to really explain that request, walk through it a little bit with the council, highlight our capital improvement plan request as well, and then take any questions that you may have. So we'll certainly keep things brief. We know you're on a tight time schedule, but we'll also be glad to take any questions that you may have. High level view, even though our enrollment increased by about 200 students from the previous year due to the MOE or maintenance of effort calculation, the maintenance of effort requirement was exactly flat funding for the locals from the state for next year. So flat funding for us is essentially a decrease in funding due to a couple of things. One, we did have an increase in enrollment, and two, we've had significant inflation over the course of this year. So Jesse's going to take you through that explanation, and then we'll start with any questions that you may have and add some things after that as well.
Dr. Stoffler, good afternoon, President Cannon, Vice President Baker, council members. I'm going to briefly run through some slides. Please feel free to ask me questions as we go, or you can wait till the end. So the first page of this handout that you should have shows our enrollment, pre and post COVID. And you can see that our enrollment has come back to pre-COVID levels. We had 14,900 students this past September, which is right about what we had in 2017 and 2018. So obviously, we had the two dips in 2020 and 2021, but it's now back to where it was before COVID hit. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And on the next page, this shows our current maintenance of effort calculation, which is the minimum amount the county has to fund. The formula has become very simple due to the kicker expiring this year, which I'll explain in a second. It's simply our current year appropriation divided by the previous three-year average, excluding 2020, times our current year enrollment, not including pre-K. We don't get any pre-K funding or county funding for pre-K students. And that number is $49 million. You can see the figure at the bottom there. And in the past, if your county appropriation divided by your county's wealth was less than the statewide average, which ours always was and is again this year, the county had to kick in an additional percentage over and above this calculation, either 2.5% or actual inflation, annual inflation, which this year was, you know, insane. So it would have been the 2.5% because they take the lower number. So if that had happened, if the legislation had not expired, or if the legislators had, you know, renewed it, which we thought they were going to do, it would have resulted in us getting an additional $1.2 million, which is very close to our actual ask, as you'll see in a second. So the next page shows the amount of county funding per student. And you can see even at the current ask, the county funding per student is only 3549, which is still less than what it was, what the county funded back in 2008, which was 3572. So we still aren't quite back to 2008 levels here 16 years later. The next page is a chart of the county per student funding over the years. And you can see the larger dips in 11 and 12 where education funding was cut. And again, you can see 12 years after the cuts were made, the funding still hasn't recovered to where it was in 2008. If you look at 2024, it's still less than it was in 2008. The next page is basically the same chart, but with the county revenue overlaid in orange on top of it. You can see the county revenue dipped around the same time as well, the 11, 12-year range, but it recovered and increased at a much faster pace, whereas the county education funding in blue has remained relatively flat over that same time period. The next page is a chart of five comparable Eastern Shore counties and their county per student funding in 2010 compared to 2023. You can see that all of the other counties have gone in, have gone up pretty substantially over that time period, whereas Wycomico, which is in green, has gone down. The next page, this page is a little dated. It's FY '21 information, but it's the most recent county funding chart that DLS had for all 24 counties. And I thought, so I thought it was relevant. And you can see that Wycomico is next to last in county dollars per student at 3292 in FY '21, only behind Caroline County. And finally, next to last page, at the bottom there, our ask is for 1.3 million of what we received in the previous year, and that's based on what we call the cost of doing business, which are the additional recurring costs just to open the doors next year. The increases in our electricity costs due to the rising cost of KWH, both for supply and delivery, the increases in our insurances, increases from rising material and repair costs due to inflation and the shortage of materials, increasing fuel costs for our buses and vehicles, and the need to add three additional SROs in our schools to continue to improve school safety. The last page was a late add. Basically, if instead of using our average enrollment for FY '23, if you use our actual FTE enrollment, which again does not include pre-K students of 13,888, that brings our per pupil county funding to 3537. If we were to only be given maintenance of effort in FY '24, that would bring it down about $100, and we'd only have about 3449 per student. If we're given what we're asking, which is again slightly over what the kicker would have given us anyway, it comes to 3549, which is almost exactly what we got last year per student. And I stand ready to any questions you might have.
Just want to add, as you're looking over the information, during my superintendent entry process, I had a plan of engaging the community, went out and talked at community forums, a number of organizations, civic organizations, elected leaders, staff, parents, and other things, and heard loud and clear about school climate and safety and how that was our first priority. So part of our request really is just the inflationary cost. When we're looking at a school system, about 72% of our overall funding goes towards people. The other 28% goes more towards the hard costs, the utilities, electricity, fuel, all of those kinds of things. So when we're looking at less, an amount of funding that is less per pupil next year versus this year, when we look at ways that we have to create because we can't cut back in certain areas like fuel, or utilities, or electricity, or those types of things, we really have to look at positions. And we wouldn't cut positions, but when we have a school system with about 2,800 employees and we have a number of vacancies that we go and look at into next year, we may have to look very closely about how we fill some of the vacancies of those 2,800 employees and roughly around 175 vacancies per year that we do fill. We'd have to look at that very closely as we move forward. The other thing I just wanted to mention is back to that school climate and safety piece and hearing about the importance of having additional school resource officers in our school. That was the other part of the request that we added. So really, we only accounted for inflation that you can see on that next to last page, and we looked at adding five more additional school resource officers. We currently have 10, and that was a goal that we had set. As we look at hopefully in the future, having a school resource officer for every school. But we set a goal of having five additional SROs next year, and we found funding, a reoccurring grant from the Maryland Center for School Safety, for two of those SROs. So that's why we included the three in the request that you have in front of us. Also wanted Dr. Reger to kind of talk briefly about the capital funding piece, because I know that's important when you're looking at it from a global perspective of local funding. It's not just the operating budget, but also the capital budget and what you have to bond for and how that all works together at a county level.
Yeah. Good afternoon again. We received some pretty good news last week from the IAC that's going to be, I think, good for us and good for the county as well in their 100% funding recommendations for FY '24 capital improvement plan. And if I misspeak, I have Mrs. Ashby back here to help me out. But in general, what it's going to allow us to do is to adjust our CIP for FY '24. Our board will address this at next week's meeting. And it will allow us to do two things. Number one, add the fifth priority from our capital improvement plan. And we got to the first four priorities already funded, thanking the county council for that. But the fifth one being in the Glen Avenue parking lot. If you've ever been by Glen Avenue during the day, you realize it's a convenience and even more so a safety concern with the parking situation there. So we'd be able to add that parking lot to our capital improvement plan and reduce the county's bond by $2.8 million for FY '24. So we'll look at an ask of the operating cost of 1.3 over maintenance of effort, but at the same time, we're able to reduce that bond load for next year by $2.8 million.
If I may, because we had this conversation briefly, they are suggesting the, and I need you to break down because I don't remember the exact numbers, reducing the overall bonding for Mardella, but asking to add this parking lot. What I would recommend is, I don't really want to bond a parking lot because 20 years for a parking lot is, you know, we're going to be doing something to that parking lot before 20 years is up, so I don't want to be paying interest costs on a parking lot. But they do have Fruitland Primary. So my thought would be is put the request in for the Glen Avenue parking lot as Pago and shift the Fruitland Primary over to bonding, because that's a project that's worth 20 years worth of cost for. But I don't want, I don't, and so Liesel has those numbers, but I wanted to put those things to you so that, because it is an overall decrease, but it's going to shift to projects on the capital budget request.
Okay. So just to clarify, the priority five project is already in the capital improvement plan. It's for approximately $1,831,000, and that's for Glen Avenue. Mardella's would be proposed to be reduced to $2.1 million from $6.7 million. To Pam's comment, we're kind of doing this on the fly because that's the first I had heard you were thinking about flipping to bond. We needed the Fruitland Primary in Pago to align with the AE selection that's underway. However, however, park side could be bonded, correct.
So, sorry, one of them, we would want to flip flop to bond because again, a roof can be for 20 years, a parking lot shouldn't be for 20 years. So I don't want to borrow for a parking lot. It doesn't make fiscal sense for the county to borrow for that. But it does make fiscal sense for the parkside roof to borrow for that. So I apologize.
No problem. We didn't really have a chance to coordinate at the time.
So if count, so what it would mean is, is that on this capital budget, the last page of the budget document, we would be reducing the total amount of bond for Mardella. We would be shifting the parkside roof renovation from Pago over to bond, and it still would be a total less number that we would bond for this fiscal year, but then we would be adding in their fifth priority project that's on their CIP but not adopted by us for the Glen Avenue parking lot.
And that's all possible because the state is picking up a significant amount of the cost regarding the Mardella project that was unanticipated.
And so it would be a significant savings to us over 20 years to not borrow that additional money.
Yes, Laura.
Just on processing it correctly, what is the bottom line as far as the reduction?
Can I get you that in an email so that I get the total rate numbers from Liesel?
Okay. So from what you're currently looking at within the four projects, no, including that fifth project, we're calculating it's $2,838,000 as it applies to the Board of Ed.
So, but I, let me get you.
Yeah, because we don't have that other project in ours.
Correct. So let me get you an email tomorrow with those exact numbers so you can see that we would ask to shift this one over to this column, add this one to this column, but ultimately it would save us in bonding. It would be a slight increase in Pago funding, but again, it gets some of their fifth project, but it saves us significant principal and interest over 20 years. So I will get you all those numbers tomorrow.
This is my first time doing a budget session with you guys. And I was just wondering, is this the full budget? I know I have another binder that says capital, and this one is the consolidated current expense budget. I didn't know, I know it's consolidated. I didn't know if, I didn't, I didn't know if there's like, like the full budget or if there's any more to it, or is this it?
That's what was adopted by them for their budget.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just looking at the numbers and everything says summary, summary, summary. And I'm just wondering if there's, you know, like for the county, you can go line by line and see what everyone makes. I didn't know if, like, I didn't know if, I'm just asking, I don't know the answers here. But, but I'm just wondering, like, is there like going to be a budget where we can see where, you know, what people make and things like that, you know, kind of like how the county looks. I'm just trying to understand, just to make sure that, you know, we're being as transparent as possible. Because some people would, some people really want to know everything in the budget.
Right. Jesse, do you want to speak to that?
About what we talked about earlier? Yeah, there is a little more in-depth version that has account numbers on it that we can provide the council if that's something they wanted to see. Like you asked, for example, I think it was you for summer school, it would break out the instructional programs like summer school and that sort of thing.
I just didn't know if that was something we could get because it's just, I just thought we would have had it provided automatically.
It has not been, this, the level of detail that you have been provided has been the level of detail because it does summer. So we provide you in the county budget, the tab that I call in there, budget.
Yeah.
That's what gets adopted. So that's at a summary level. Their budget gets adopted at the level of that yellow book, and it has some summary and has a little bit more detail. We provide council for additional information, the munis level, and in the budget document that we provide you because of 202009, we provide you the position control document. That is a requirement of council for the county. So it sounds like Jesse can provide to us a little bit more detail, but kind of like when you're adopting the county budget, you're adopting actually that, you know, 25, you know, 40-page document versus this document, you're adopting a summary level of information, and that's what they adopt as well.
I'm just asking because I know we can get the information from you, Pam. I just didn't know if we can get the information. Like if somebody was to ask me, hey, can you see if you can get me the information for such and such in the budget, can I get that? You know, is that something that I can just look up online and find, you know, or is that something I have to personally ask for?
No, you can certainly, we can provide you first off with something that's in a little more depth than what you have now. We also do that once the entire budget is adopted and we know what's being provided by the state and local, and once all of that's been finalized, we do an expanded budget as well. But it's also on, on our website where we have our transparency portal. All of our expanded budgets and everything are on that website as well. But we can, we can certainly provide something in more depth.
I appreciate that very much.
Sure.
I have a question. The expense of doing your own transportation, how expensive is that? I see insurances, I don't know if the insurance is, is insurance on the bus, because I know you've got a lot of buses now, and I know what it costs. Because I used, at McDonald's, the bus drivers were there. Now, some of them had retired, and they talked about the expense of maintaining the bus. Is that in this budget? What it costs to, for purchasing a bus and maintain, you know, maintain the bus?
We have what we pay the contractors, and then we have a separate category that shows everything that's paid for transportation, but it's probably not to the level of detail that you're asking.
But, but you have your own buses and paid people by the hour. I'm not talking about the contractors. I'm talking about what it costs the Board of Education to have their own buses, because that's, to me, is increase their revenue. Now, if you didn't have the buses, you're spending contracts, is it cheaper to have contractors, or is it cheaper for you having your own buses? That's maybe, that's what I'm asking.
Like, is it pretty, pretty even?
It's pretty even, and we do, I know we do our very best to always try to fill open routes with contractors first. We only have to go with our own buses with contracted drivers out of necessity. There are, there are in-town routes with lower mileage that are extremely hard to fill. And in recent years, I would say in the last decade or so, we've had to fulfill those routes with our own buses and with contracted drivers because despite our best efforts, advertising, 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 bus contractors just won't accept those routes with that lower mileage.
Okay. So in the yellow book that you guys received, there's a section of it called Student Transportation Services. And it has, it starts on page 105, talks about the summary, and then the actual numbers are back behind it. So it talks about the cost for drivers, salaries, how much they pay for contract. And so that information is in the document that you have been providing.
Okay. I got, I got.
It's a different page in the yellow book. I brought my green book, which is the.
It's 105.
Yeah, it's 106.
Oh, for the yellow book?
Yeah. It's 106 in the yellow book.
And the second question, I guess it's in the yellow book, food service. Because in this book, it had no money amount.
It's, you'll find that in that.
In that yellow.
That yellow book as well.
And one suggestion, I understand that you have to throw a lot of food away. And I think that you may have to change the menu, because if you cook for 1,000 kids and maybe 200 eat, and then you throw the rest of it away, it seems like you give it to a shelter or something. Throwing food away to me upsets me.
There are things, I want to make sure that the public understands, there are things that times that we're able to provide to the community. Many times, we also prepare food based on trends. So we look at that very closely. You know, what is the particular items that we're serving for lunch that day? What day of the week is it? What time of the year is it? And then what was the trend in the past for how many meals we would have served, you know, at each X, Y, and Z schools? So we do look at that very closely. Sometimes there are prepackaged foods or whatever it may be that have been heated that we are not under the guidelines of what we have to follow from the Health Department that we're able to just give that away and provide that. But we do try to keep that to a minimum.
Each 150, sorry, 159 of the yellow book is their food service fund detail. So again, they, their food service is a separate fund, like, you know, our airport is a separate fund. So they have a separate level of detail for that.
I just hate to hear that the kids don't eat the food you serve.
I will say, one thing we're very proud of is that when you look at our overall food service allocation, with that being a proprietary fund, it is now almost completely self-sufficient. We, we do not have to really subsidize that fund hardly at all compared to in the past.
All right. Thank you.
I got another question. It's about the auctions every year. They have like auctions for furniture. You guys have a lot of auctions for that. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, you can get a lot of good deals there. Like, I'm just trying to figure out why you guys auction off a lot of furniture a year. Is that, is that something that you have to do, or is that something that, do you know what I'm talking about?
Sure.
We, we haven't had the large auction, and we, it used to be every spring, the Board of Ed and the county would combine on a surplus auction, and county would bring surplus items, Board of Ed would have surplus items. In recent years, we've gone away from that because, one, we don't have that mass amount, and we use another method of auctioning off surplus items when we do have them called Gov. Deals. I see you would find items there, but.
And Gov. Deals is an online auction.
Yeah. Government agencies across the country take advantage of whether it's school systems, county governments.
County uses it as well.
Yeah, I've actually used it.
Joe? Yeah, a couple of questions. This page and the page after it, I see where you, county per pupil, you've got us as a green line, you use Caroline, Cecil, Dorchester, Somerset, and Wycomico as comparisons. And the next page, you use, I guess, all the counties, and you have Worcester in that, Worcester County in that, but you don't use Worcester in this. Why the county asked to us, wouldn't you have used that?
Do you want to speak to that?
That's a good question. I actually got the chart from DLS, and for some reason, they grouped the five of us together and didn't include Worcester. So I just kept it the same.
I would, I will say, just on a scaling purpose, if you look, Worcester County is the highest per pupil funding at 14,000. So the scale would become one of these where Worcester would be all up here. So they were looking at kind of the lower level ones to see the funding. It's more of a, probably a scale thing than a location thing.
I think my understanding from this chart is it was, it was bringing together like counties. So counties that had similar.
Funding mechanism.
Funding and wealth.
Now, when you're looking at these other numbers, does these other numbers have their school building cost included into them, or their capital projects included into them, and Wycomico County doesn't? Because when we, you know, we invest a lot more per student in what's listed here when you figure your building cost and cost of a new school and all that. So I look at this difference, you know, Worcester's putting in 14,638. Now, I know we get a lot more from the state, but did you check to see, before you printed these numbers, that they weren't included, including their capital funds in there also?
No, they're just including the county appropriation. You came right from DLS.
Operating fund appropriation.
It's the operating fund appropriation for each of these schools.
But how did you know what they send, what they send them is correct or not? Did they, did the county include that when they sent it?
So they, I would assume, this is an assumption and an opinion on my part, they're not going to include in their number that they send to the state their capital number because that then becomes part of our MOE. They don't want their capital number, like we don't want our capital number, to be part of our MOE. So these would be based on maintenance of effort and what they want counted, which is operational cost, not capital.
Okay. The SROs, you say you want to add five, and you have funding for two.
That's correct.
Ready funding for two. Now, the sheriff was in this week, this week, last week, whatever, get today's mixed up. We've been here just about every day for the past week. Anyway, we know the challenges they're facing right now as far as hiring deputies. Have you been assured, if you get this money, that there will be SROs appropriated to the schools?
So we've been assured by Sheriff Lewis that he's going to do his very best to recruit and to obtain three, you know, as many as he can, hopefully three, three additional SROs for this funding, and then a total of five that we would have funding for. We spoke about that actually last summer, and I know that he's been actively working on that and hopeful, he said, by late fall to be able to have five additional SROs. So that's what we're hoping for. I know he has challenges with staffing as well.
And how many will that leave you short as far as fulfilling an obligation to all the schools for SROs?
We would have a total of, at that point, of 15. So we have a. So we have a total of 24 schools, including other programs. We have one currently at Choices. So it would be about 25 additional, uh, there are 25 total SROs. And this would provide us with 15 of that 25 to fulfill every school building.
So when you step forward and ask for another million dollars above maintenance of effort, I guess that, um, when citizens see that, councilmen start getting questions. And the whole council got an email this morning about, um, some of the books. We'll bring the books up again. You know about the books. And, um, you know, they want to know why we're putting some of the books in the schools that are being put in there due to their content. And I sent an email, and so was the rest of the council. And I found them pretty disgusting. What motivates people to put books like that in our school?
So we have a, a media center selection process where we have obviously thousands and thousands of books in our media centers across all of our school sites. They, they utilize a number of well-known publishing companies, whether it be Scholastic or whatever it may be to do that. And they utilize appropriate measures to be able to, to guide. Certainly, our media specialists do not read every single book that's in those libraries or, or staff that may do that. So we look at what's, is it age-appropriate? Is it, is it specific for the grade level that we're trying to reach, whatever it may be? We also, on the other hand, have a selection policy and procedure. So that if there are inappropriate books or if someone feels like there's a book that's inappropriate in one of our media centers, there's a process that they can go through to have that book reviewed by the media specialist as well as a, a committee that can make recommendations. And ultimately, that review could go to the Board of Education for their review as well.
Yes, you do have books that go into the media center that have not been reviewed by the, um, media specialist or a committee that approves books?
Not every single one of those books, would I say, have been read by our, our media specialists. We do as much due diligence as we can. We review the, the summary of the book. We make sure it's age-appropriate. We, we know, we look at the reviews and everything else regarding that. But ultimately, if there is one here or there, uh, you know, if it's not appropriately and we become aware of it, we go through that review process to make sure that we take a look at that. Yes.
I got a couple. Thank you all.
Sure.
Very much for being here. These are down the road and around the corner where we're not really looking at right now. With Kerwin coming in, what, what's that going to do to us next year, year after, year after?
Mr. Reed, I think, can speak to that.
My, my understanding is it's not going to change anything for the next couple of years. Our, there's, there's a thing called a local share that's eventually going to replace MOE. But we're several years down the road from that happening. So we'll continue to have the same calculation you just saw on page two, I think it was, for at least three or four more years, I believe.
Thank you.
Can you speak, Jesse, maybe also add, what, what happens beyond that if local share becomes more than maintenance of effort versus an increase above maintenance of effort at this point in time? Will that, um, cause a higher increase for the county down the road?
Great, yeah, great question. So right now, they're calculating it two ways, the very simple way I showed you on page two. And they're doing something called a local share where basically they're taking 10 different pots of money and they're allocating a pot of money based on certain statistics. And they're letting us have whichever one's higher. And for some counties this year, the local share was higher. For some, the MOE, the old way, was higher. For us, it wasn't even close. And I think it's going to be, that's why I said several years before, well, not several, but maybe by 28, 29, will they finally pass? And the local share will actually be higher than maintenance of effort. At that point, maintenance of effort eventually kind of goes away. And it's now replaced with these pots of funding instead.
I think it's important to understand that this would not cause the county portion to exponentially increase because of Kerwin down the road. It may only, you could maybe even think of it as a transition or a bridge to something that's going to be required once we get into, you know, FY '28, FY '29, somewhere in that timeframe.
So that kind of ties into my next question. If we, if this above maintenance of effort, effort funding is approved, what does that do? Does that raise the needle next year and the year after, and the year after?
It's the starting point for the next.
Okay.
So it, it does become the starting point for maintenance of effort.
Okay.
I do think it's important to understand that it's the starting point on a per pupil basis. So it, it's not that total amount. So it is on a per pupil basis. So, and that's, that's the way that maintenance of effort is calculated now. It was only because of that three-year average where flat funding actually occurred. You're going to find most any other year, you know, we may have 25 more students or 50 more students, or 25 less, or whatever it may be. So it's always calculated in the, at the end on a per pupil basis, not as a, a total amount.
You have 300 new students this year?
We had 200 new this year.
200.
Yes.
Interesting that we're number 23 out of 24 on the per pupil. That's interesting.
We think so.
I have a quick question, another quick question. They're talking about putting social workers in the schools and mental health. Is that included in your budget or is that separate funding?
It is actually included in our budget. And that's a requirement, uh, which I think is another important point for the council to understand. Even though at times state funding increases, it comes with very specific requirements. So our state funding has increased, but part of the requirements of that increase go towards mental health in our schools. So we actually have increased social workers over the last decade, maybe a little less, from about seven to now over 30 in our schools.
Is that, is, is, that's not part of the per pupil? That's not part of, per pupil, can't be.
Most, most of our, most of our social workers come from the, the requirements of the blueprint funding that we receive from the state.
Okay, good.
The, the per pupil is for all, all citizens? Or is it for legal and illegal as well?
Students, enrolled students.
Any enrolled students.
September 30.
Doesn't matter if their parents pay taxes or not?
We're not permitted to, to get, to use any information such as that. It's simply students who are enrolled.
We, we educate all of our students that are enrolled with us.
I, I understand. I'm just, you know, so people know that we're, you know, we've got more than just legal and illegal kids in our schools. But another question is, is, uh, we have this, this is for the whole budget. Do we have, um, the expenses for just the 50 million that, that we give? Or, or is that, is that? I'm just asking.
They don't separate it out because it, it's kind of like we get all of our revenue sources and pay all of our expenses. They get all of their revenue sources and pay all of their expenses. So they don't say these, now, there are certain things within their budget that have to go, you know, cert, specific grants and that kind of stuff. But, and like ours, we have that same thing. But it's, they're not saying that this percentage of this employee is coming from our budget. They're saying they have this total funding, including the money that the county is giving them. And this is how they're allocating it amongst those different needs within the school.
Restricted funds from grants, we would do that. We could, we can track by grant, certain expenses that are required by that grant. But the unrestricted funds, we don't, we don't go to that level.
I just, you know, I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, appreciate your question.
And, and again, it's like our budget where we have a revenue section that then pays for all of the general fund expenses.
Right.
Because it's not restricted in use as to how it can be used.
Or what Joe touched on, which would be a concern to mine as well. I'm, I'm fine with the, with the amount above maintenance of effort. But the question I had, which is, is kind of like leans into what Joe was saying, with the school resource officers and the sheriff having trouble even having enough deputies on staff for his, for, for his department. And you have to tell me if my methodology is right or wrong here. If there's 250,000, I see as a commitment for three officers, uh, resource officers, right? What if it turns out that we can't hire those? You know, the, the county has committed to 250,000 more dollars in maintenance of effort, which would be, you know, which would be included in the next year's formula, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So I'd, I'd really want to make sure that if we're, we're making that commitment, that it's not something that we're getting out ahead of ourselves. And should the commitment that we had be more of a one, a million dollars as opposed to 1.3?
Sure.
If we can't get, if we're pretty certain we aren't going to be bringing those officers in anyway?
Well, my hope is that we can bring those officers in. And that, and I, and I do believe that Sheriff Lewis is working very hard to be able to make that happen in the conversations that I've had. So that's my hope, is that we'll have those by late fall. If that's not the case, we know we will have them at some point in time, you know? And if it's not, happens to be not before the end of the year, I think we could certainly be more than willing to commit to the council that, okay, there was a salary savings because those positions weren't filled, even though this will be a reoccurring cost. We know at some point, it's going to go towards the salaries of those three school resource officers. What do we do with that savings that we now have because those officers weren't filled until April or February, whatever it may be? I think we can certainly work with the council on, here's what that amount is currently at this point in time. Very similar to what we did in, in the past year. Here are some school climate, some school safety areas that we could use that money towards, since that, that did not happen until whatever X point in time next year.
The other piece of that is, is if, if they don't have them and we don't have them, they're not billing us for them, you know? So they're not, they're not having that expense. We're also not having that expense. You know, if we don't have those employees in our, then it's savings on the county side as well.
It's savings, but what I'm getting at is the fact that there's.
It would be built into their MOE going forward. But what he's saying is, is that come spring, if we say, if they say that we only are going to have those filled for, you know, three months, four months, this is what they saved, they would, uh, work with us to say, hey, okay, let us expend this money to do these things for this year. Yes, it wasn't for that exact thing, but at least they're not just banking that money. They would actually be using it towards the good of the school, is what I'm hearing from.
That's right. For school safety purposes or something that we can work, work on together?
So, again, instead of it dropping to their bottom line and be savings in their fund balance, which doesn't help us in the future because of MOE, they would, what Dr. Stoffer is saying is, is that they would work with us to ensure that the $250,000 that we're giving them is expended in this fiscal year, either through resource officers, which we hope to have, or through other costs that would benefit the schools.
I mean, we could take the 250. We could transfer that to contingency. And with the council's understanding that, uh, once that were to develop, we certainly would, um, be willing to make a transfer for contingency in the future. I'm assuming if we did that as well, it would still apply to MOE, whether we did it now, whether we did it in three months or six months from now.
Yes, it would. Because unlike last year where we had that ability because of the state disagreement on calculation of MOE, um, we don't have that ability this year. So if the council made the decision to move that money to contingency, it could go back. And if it went back, it would go back as maintenance of effort.
Because, I, I, like I said, and Dr. Stoffer, I had the conversation with you. I don't have any problem with it. But when I look at this, and of course, as Joe said, and from the discussions we've had with the sheriff's department, it, it may be more practical for us to take, take this in two steps as opposed to one and get, get ahead of ourselves. If they were standing up outside the door right now, lined up, ready to walk in, into any of your schools, it wouldn't even be a discussion. But at this stage of the game, we're not quite sure how the recruitment's going to go for this next year. That's why we made such a large commitment to, to their budget this year and their funding this year for salaries. Because we're hoping that everything will turn around.
Sure.
So I just was curious on that. The only other question I had, Mr. Reed, was, uh, the handout that you gave us, it, it was about, there were, there were several items taken out from the cost of doing business in the actual proposed budget. And I didn't know why. I didn't know what constituted, um, this, this list that you had for county considerations as opposed to what was here before. So just, you just decided to highlight some?
That's a great question. Micah, do you want to?
Sure, I can speak to that. I think what we were looking for was really things that were hard costs. And that's how we, you know, we, we knew that flat funding, when we had that much inflation over the course of a full year and on top of it, additional students, uh, that we would not be receiving funding for, we really just focused on the hard costs, the things that inflation really impacts. And that's what we tried to list out here. So the things that you see in front of you are, are items that are just going to, have gone up because of inflation and honestly are mostly going to stay there over time.
Okay, all right. Uh, another blueprint question. I believe we spoke about a blueprint coordinator, which was scheduled at 150,000, but they came in under that?
That's correct. So initially, the, the funding from the state was for 150,000, but it then got almost cut in half. It was about 83,000. So, you know, we do have a blueprint coordinator with Dr. Briggs. He has a salary. And, and we have, you know, joke about that or whatever it may be from this additional funding. But this additional funding will actually go towards a position that we're required to, uh, to have fulfilled with National Board Certified Teachers. So you may have heard that we are obligated to continue to work to increase the number of National Board Certified Teachers that we'll, we'll have in our school system. So this person will be coordinating those recruitment efforts.
Look at that, you're already saving money. We're not even out of the game.
There you go.
What else? Any other comments you want to share?
Appreciate your time. Again, thank you. This was an opportunity that you did not have to extend. It means a lot that you did, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
And the Beaver Run, the Beaver Run dedication was fantastic.
It was awesome. Thank you.
Really, really welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we are trying to locate Mr. Page. He's obviously running late. So I don't know if you want to.
Page is that in?
Just cut him, he ain't show up.
Well, if they're not here right now, I guess what we would do is go and recap.
I thought we had, um.
We have Tri-County, but, uh, he's, he's AWOL right now.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
I did want to, uh, I, there was one outstanding question that I did not get a chance to email council on. I believe there's only one outstanding question. The outstanding question that I still had was how much approximately it would cost to do an additional 1% for those employees that are only getting a 3% raise? And this is an approximate number because we literally have to go employee by employee because of, um, the changes that have been made to each employee. I'm looking at about, including FICA, about $250,000 is 1%. Now, you have to understand, that's only for the positions that aren't getting the 7.9, the positions that aren't getting the 13, sheriff's positions, the state's attorney's positions that Jamie Dykes had requested some additional funding for. So, and it's also not including the positions that are on the list that council has for, um, grade or changes or additions and that kind of stuff. So, and that's only salary and FICA. As we keep increasing the amount of that, we should also be looking at how much we're funding towards our pension. Because, um, you know, each percent that we add also adds cost to what an employee's calculation is on the pension plan.
So 1% pay increase for all the employees excluding?
The ones that I just listed.
Is 250K?
Yes.
It's not, it's not including insurance or anything like that, right?
And insurance is not based on salary. So it.
And insurance is not based on salary. So it, it's really, it's, it's really just salary and FICA that I'm calculating at the $250,000. It's not including pension, it's not including OPEB, it's not including workers' comp, which technically does have a salary component, because they take, they look at your actual cost of how much you're paying an employee. But at 1%, that's not significant, significant enough to change the number that we've put in for workers' comp. But that is, so it's literally just salary and FICA.
So, rule of thumbs, we've heard this before, when you hire an employee, it's salary plus 30% for benefits. Okay, so we're not, we're not doing the benefit package because we've already got that in insurance. So would you say, rule of thumb, 10% over this 250, 20%? Something that we can kind of base-
So, again, that 250 includes 7.65% for FICA already. It, as I said, it doesn't include anything else for pension. I'm not suggesting that we need to do anything for pension for this fiscal year, but I will say that in our future fiscal years, we are going to have to continue to look at how much we're funding to pension, because each time we up our salaries, it ups the amount that we pay out in benefits. So I just, I'm just putting that up more on the table than saying that we need to add that cost this fiscal year. I, it's, it's more of be aware.
So if we were to find, let's say, 600K, that would give us 2%, we could add to the 3%?
Approximately, yes. I, I, and I'll be honest, I will literally have to go by department, by employee. So if we're moving the scale, because right now, that's what we've done, is we've moved the scale. So we've moved the bottom number on each of those scales. So what that does is it moves the scale for each employee, and we need to add that percentage point. But it also moves the scale for every vacant position that we have, because we, we fund our vacant positions at, at the midpoint to allow flexibility. That's why it was in the email that I stated that, when I gave you that highlighted spreadsheet that shows anything that wasn't 3%, there are certain positions that are in the 3% category, but that are higher than 3% because we're funding them at a midpoint versus where they were funded when it was a filled position. So I gave you every employee on that list, let me rephrase that, every position on that list that was making more than 3% growth, but those positions may not all be filled. I will say, as I stated at the beginning, we still do have the issue of, across all funds of 85,373 for health insurance. Because of the fact that, basically, the day I presented the budget to you, we found out that it's not going to be, so every department is short on their health insurance portion. And on a small department like yours, and a small department like mine, there isn't funding, there is an extra funding to take it from something else. So we would be asking that that $85,000 be added to this budget.
Any questions? We, we look, thank you for, and, and the executive administration as well, for getting a lot of the emails answered so quickly, because there were a lot of questions we had. It, it helps us when we get the response as quickly as we did. On the salary increases that we'd asked about, on salaries that were above 3%, the only thing I noticed was that in elections and local management board, there seemed to be the majority of those two departments that had excessive increases. I was wondering what the methodology was there, why it was determined that that was, those were necessary. There were some in Rhodes and others, but I get the fact that we were trying to bump Rhodes up and-
So elections is mandated by the state. Those positions, even though they are funded by us, they're state positions on a state salary scale. So we don't have a whole lot of say in what they're hired at and what they're increased to. We're just kind of told, this is what you're funding them at. We, we really don't have that say. Local Management Board, those were positions, some of them are new, some of them are to be competitive in the market, and to restructure that department partly, to provide more services for our county. But most of, the only position in the local management board that is actually funded by the county is the Director of Local Management Board. The rest of those are, are funding that has been approved by the grant document that controls. So, yes, they're listed on our schedule because they are our budget. But other than a portion, and only a portion of the Director's salary and benefits, is paid by the county. The rest of it is paid by the grant. And so all of those increases are not ones that actually impact the general fund.
Any, anyone else? The only other thing I had was the Housing Rehab Project, where there was 75,000 with planning, zoning.
Planning, zoning.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure whether I was buying into that yet. I just, I'm just saying that first-
And again, that is, that is a concept that we have brought to council as something that we feel is important. And we've explained the purpose of it.
Yeah, and I know there's other pots of money out there. The Health Department has some, and, and I, I understand that. I understand. I just read that, and I was a little bit, wasn't sure whether or not I was willing to buy into it yet, but I made my- Yes.
I'm sorry. On that note, I guess, so you're referring to the planning and zoning, the new-
The new funding for 75,000, yeah.
Yeah, the, I guess I had a question on that, just looking through that, too. The, that was the Housing Rehab. The third item on that was the Ag Transfer Match, 50,000. I didn't think we were mouth certified yet as a county. Did we fix that? Funky, I'm looking to you. You might know more than anyone else, but, or if they don't, but we were not able to bring in money because, but Comico County has said, it does not care about agriculture preservation. And because we were not certified as a county, we have not been able to match money for all this period of time, for the last 12 years. So if that's a change in policy, awesome. Great.
So this was a number that was presented to me by Lori and Keith. And so I expect that they know that we're eligible to bring that money in, so, and use it. All I can, because we have a corresponding revenue to offset. It's, it's money that's coming for, so we're spending it. So if that 50 gets cut, then we correspondingly will cut the 50 in revenue, because there's money coming from a grant for that. So that one is budget neutral. If you reduce one, we have to reduce the other.
No, I was more concerned, just question of whether we could even do it or not.
My understanding from both of them-
We weren't even allowed to as of, to, a year ago. So if this is the way we're going, that's fantastic, and I'm glad that's-
My understanding from Lori and Keith is yes, because they wouldn't have asked me to have it in there.
Awesome.
So I'm going to rely on the subject matter experts that it's an appropriate use of the funds.
They do state that it's from previous, previous, previously, I don't know what that means, but previously collected state taxes. That's what they've said this is for. So I thought, well-
Again, I'm relying, I'm relying on, on the information that they're providing me, since they're the, the expert in that.
Right. Anyone else? No. Yes, Jeff?
I just have another random ques-, is it okay to go through another area budget?
Yeah, this is kind of a recap.
Yeah. Okay. You know, I always bring up mosquito control and another, another report came out again, basically saying that it's practically useless. And I've noticed, so I'm looking at our budget for mosquito control this year. We have that and gypsy moth, which of course, no, they're no longer called gypsy moth. But either way-
The gypsy, the gypsy moth is a state number. So the gypsy moth, I will state, is a number that comes from the state, because they're the ones who handle that aspect of it. And so they provide us with an estimate as to how much it's going to cost to, to do the areas that they state need to be done. So I don't come up with that number.
Less concerned about that, more concerned about the mosquito control. The, where we tend to spend money, I guess, for our actuels have been around 144, these, 2021 was 144,758. And then actual last year, 129,000. We're budgeting to 10s, we're basically always like, well, not always, we're, we're about 80,000 budgeted more than what we actually spend within that. And if any council members looking at that, it's page 48 and page 47. But I guess, is that an area we're just padding, or is that really what we really think is going to be used? And, I mean, I throw that off, I say, that's one point, of course, and I'll also say that just the, the part-time salaries, the 75,000 for that, and then 60,000 for general, that's just seems like a, a lot of money for folks. But nonetheless, and I know, I'll also say, I know we get paid to do spraying for like the city and others, correct? I guess my main concern and question out of this is, are we budgeting more? We seem to consistently be budgeting more than we are spending, and I still think we should always be spending less there.
So we, so we have one full-time employee. So that number is a full-time employee.
Part-time, is that, what is that for?
That's, that's for people to go out and do the spraying. So that's a tough, so this is our wish, and this would be the amount that we would actually like to be able to go and spray. And this would be the salaries for, if we could get full employment. It's hard to get full employment in this area. So, yes, we always underspend because we can't get full employment. That is one of the areas that has helped us generate the fund balances that we have. Our policy has always been to fund at full employment for the department as its stated needs. Now, if we don't spray as much as what this is, we also don't bill. So we have a corresponding decrease in the revenue. So it, it's twofold. We budget this number at the revenue number that we think we're going to get, at, for the amount of times that we think we're going to spray, for the amount of employment that we think we should have. If all of those variables don't happen, each of those numbers do change. So if you reduce this number, you als-, we also have to correspondingly reduce the revenue.
Small, you don't understand how bad it's needed.
It'd be great if it was effective, which it is. All reports show that is absolutely ineffective. It just makes people feel good.
I, I will-
Like, oh, we sprayed, I'll be so good.
Now, see, I, I-
You did what you're supposed to do.
I hear the mosquito control truck now.
Oh, I grew up in Athol. I know, if anybody knows anything about mosquitoes, it's me, believe me.
I, I, I'm the, I, I'm the one that attracts them in my family. So I, at, at 2:00 in the morning, when I, you know, hear the mosquito truck pull up my driveway, I'm like, yay, they came again today. So yes, maybe it's a feel-good. But-
Sounds like a darn generator in the swamp when you, when you're listening to the mosquitoes buzz.
So I, I appreciate hearing it, because I, I hear it, you know, back up our driveway.
Do you have a question, Laura?
I do. I want to go back to the 85,000 increase for the health insurance. Have you guys talked about where you would take that money from? I mean, are you looking to use, use prior year fund balance?
It would be, i- if it's coming directly from us, it would be use of prior year fund balance.
It would be use of prior year fund balance.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
I got your mouth question.
Good. Need you to add. I started sending an email, and I figured, you know what?
What you got?
So the question of Ag Transfer Match, sorry to cut in there.
I'm done.
Laura, okay. Just the Ag Transfer Match, I saw that for 50,000. Now, just didn't dive into depth, and all I saw was one paragraph piece of that. But we, last I knew, we were not mouth certified in-
Since 2008, we did lose our certification. However, we still get mouth funds. We get transfer tax at a different rate than if you were still certified.
So we're not, okay.
Currently not certified, but we still do receive funds.
Well, I, while we're still here, love the, love the county to be, uh, mouth certified one day. Shows, shows that we care about agriculture in, in Comico County. I think that's really important.
Indeed.
Cool. That answers my question. Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else?
On my end.
Thank you, Keith.
That was easy. Thanks, Keith. It's the only other, the question, the only other issue on the table. I, I'm assuming we're, as far as the recap is concerned, we're, we've covered most of the questions we have. Getting back to Tri-County, I don't know, Pam, if you can help us or not, but there's a concern on the fact that it's gone from 605,000 to over a million dollars. I know there was some comments in there stipulating that because of the state, what their numbers have gone up to, we're required to go up. I'm not really familiar with all that. I know that one year, Executive Culver cut it by about 200,000 to 300,000. And I'm certain, I'm sure that would have been in viol-, not in violation, but in contrast to what the state had done, because the state wasn't cutting anything at the time. So it seemed as if we independently took that measure. I, I never followed through to, to-
So I will say, in the last fiscal year, the number that was funded was not their request. So the previous executive did not put before council the full request. In the budget detail, and I don't know what page number, for my page numbers, it's 57, so it's probably about 10 less, so it's in the 40s somewhere. For you guys, there's a line item in this budget that says Grants County Match for $306,000. That $306,000 is for a federal grant that they've applied for, but they don't yet know if they've gotten. And it, it's a funding mechanism, and I can't explain the detail. All I can explain is, is if that 306, if they don't get the grant, they're not going, we're not going to give them the 306. So the 306 was put in for them to apply for this grant. But unlike their, the other number that we give them, which is the 703 and the capital number, that would not be provided to them on a monthly basis. It would be provided to them once they prove to us that, how much they actually should get to match the grant from the federal government. So it is not, it's a number that they need for this grant, but they don't know if they're getting the grant.
What role might Worcester and Somerset play in this same grant?
So they have a, a share of the Tri-County.
Oh, okay. All right. So we have a sheet on it?
But primarily, we're between 80 and 90% of the, and this all goes to Shore Transit. That's all, we're 80 to 90% of the funding mechanism for Shore Transit. So Worcester and Somerset only provide about 10 to 20% of the total.
The other part of that is, if we don't provide the 306, they can't apply for the grant, right?
Correct.
Yeah, for sure.
So it was, it was a, it was a tough decision for us to include this number in here, but it was ultimately the decision of administration that we felt it was important that they apply. I can tell you that until they prove to me that they've gotten the grant, they're not getting cut any, if that money is left in here, they're not getting that on a monthly basis towards their appropriation. That number will, will stay in our budget until the point in time it is shown that they need it to match a grant.
Is something else we could put in contingency?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just pulled the letter up from February. Okay, I'll make sure I read it. Sorry.
So again, it is, it is not a number that is going into their monthly appropriation, but it is a number that is in there to allow them to apply for the grant.
Now, if they apply for this grant, and say they don't get it until like, okay, when's their budget start? July 1st?
Yes.
And they don't get it until like October, November, December?
We would not, we would give them the proportional amount to make it through the end of the fiscal year. And I would make sure that they tell me how much they need proportionally to make it through the end of the fiscal year, because, because.
I've not gone through all of it. I mean, I guess a lot of it's just in, you know, I had this big argument, discussion, I won't call it an argument, probably 10 or 12 years ago. You know, everybody's cost of everything goes up. Anybody out here working every day is paying more for gas, paying more for car insurance, paying more to live. And they didn't want to increase their- And they didn't want to increase their fares, you know? So they wanted more money for operating. And I just, you know, like I say, as as the rest of the world turns, everybody's paying more for something. So people riding the public transportation, unfortunately, maybe they have to pay a little bit more, too. And a lot of them are on, they get booklet or something where they get free rides anyway. So. Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars.
I just wonder if, I'm just throwing it out there. I would just wonder if the county could do something independent from Tri County Council that is more effective and less cost-effective, less costly, because it's it's expensive.
Probably not, because the funding is going to have to go through something other than the county to run that type of transportation, because it's a regional transportation service. It's not a county, because any of the routes, not any of the routes, a section of the routes cover more than one county. And so we need a regional-based approach for that.
Right. It's just it's disheartening every time you see a bus and you see maybe one person on it.
Yeah, it's it's not very well.
It's it and.
The state driven.
I had I had someone make a comment to me today. You're seeing them at a point in time. Are you seeing them right after they've left off the people at the main destination or the main transfer point? Or, you know, are you seeing them at two o'clock in the afternoon where that route is maybe not as utilized, but it is still utilized because you saw somebody on it? Versus, are you seeing them at seven AM when they're trying to get to work, just like you and I are trying to get to work? It was a comment that was made to me today. And so, again, I admit, I see those buses and only see, but then I also see the number of people sitting out here by our courthouse waiting to catch a bus. And so I may not see them on the bus, but I see them waiting to catch a bus.
Yeah, I just wonder if, you know, we could send the city a bill. Because, you know, most of the buses are in the city, it seems like.
I'll leave that statement there.
Okay.
You'll go back and work on that today?
Yeah. Send them a bill. Whatever the fire service cross costs, yeah, send it to them.
Some no, but some of the buses go to Ocean City.
Yeah.
And that's where, when people go to Ocean City, because my nephew goes, works in Ocean City every day, and he gets the thing for twenty-five dollars, where I came up with twenty-five dollars, because that's what it costs him. I think, I don't know, a week or whatever, it's twenty-five dollars to get to Ocean City to work.
Is it municipalities fund Tri County Council?
Not for the Shore Transit portion. It is it is a county-based funding mechanism.
It's really heavy state-driven. I'm not quite sure of how it all works out, but the state pretty much.
State and federal.
Mandate that you're going to do this.
Yeah, it is. It is, you know, we are only a portion, yes, of the portion that the county provides. We are the biggest portion between the three counties. But our county and city residents, our county residents, our county has the most ridership.
And I think they do a really good job on the logistics in trying to make sure they're as efficient as possible. I've sat in enough meetings to hear how they, it's it's just a lot of anxiety in the room about how they, when they're going to have to cut a route, they have to have public hearings before they cut a route, and they want to make sure that they are really as efficient as possible.
They just cut a million dollars.
It's a big dinosaur.
The last meeting, they just cut a whole bunch.
I got a lot of confidence in Tri County. I just do. But I just was very curious on this terribly huge increase.
What's the minimum number that we can fund them? Do you?
So I I do not know. I do know that, again, the three oh six is a number that precludes them from getting a federal grant if it's not in our budget. They have made work, not saying it's right, but they have made work the number that we have provided them over the last several years. Not to say that that's the right number or the wrong number, but that is the number that they have made work. But they have had to, as John stated, look at their routes and and what where they're providing the services based on the number that we provide them.
So if we if we fund the three oh six and Worcester doesn't fund their portion, they don't get the grant either, right?
I don't know exactly. That would be a question.
Somerset, Somerset, it's very, very marginal, I guess, funding.
I don't know if they can, because of the size of our portion, I I can't answer that question.
It looks like you cut all the COVID nineteen out of your budget. I was just looking at our council budget, and I didn't know if that was something that we could consider, maybe just to save a little bit of money. I mean, our our county council budget.
So COVID nineteen was a line item that was in there. The way Munis works is that it only shows things that have had expenses in the last in in the period of time that you're showing. So if a department has paid a COVID number, it's there. We were tracking it separately due to federal reimbursement, most likely going forward because of the end of the federal state of emergency that happened in the last week. Most likely, that tracking will wind down. And so it if you're buying that kind of supply, that supply is going to just be a cost that you would absorb in another line item. Or we budget it for that, but it's it's not something that we're, the reason we had it separated out is it made it easier for reporting purposes to the federal government.
I'm just looking at our council budget, and it's actually in there as a line item.
And that's a decision for council.
On our local matches on this service, request for service-based methodology summary, it says Somerset needs to increase by one hundred and fifty-three thousand, Worcester one hundred and fifty-three, and us three oh six. Is it possible that we could find out, either through Pam or Laura, if Somerset and Worcester are planning on increasing their funding?
They're putting it all on their schools, I think.
Pardon me?
They're putting it all on their schools.
Worcester's not. They cut their school budget. But anyway, that would, if if we, I mean, it'd save us a lot of trouble, hand-wringing of sorts of what to do.
Laura, do you want to reach out?
Yeah, I don't mind reaching out to you.
Okay. So Laura will reach out to the two counties for you.
All right. Any other questions?
Is this just just budget recap or?
Yes.
So we'll most likely be finalizing this for the first meeting in June. It'll give us quite a bit of time. I personally haven't had a lot of time to review since the last two budget sessions that we've had. Everything's been back-to-back. But June sixth will be when we'll put it back on the agenda for approval. It could be an extended session where the discussion is more of a recap again. But we'll we'll see how that plays out at that point.
I I do ask if council has items that they want.
Yes.
I I need that before the sixth.
Oh, yeah.
Especially if you're doing, if you're asking, again, you can, you have the ability to cut. You also have the ability to request administration to make increases. If you want those and want those for something like salaries, that's not a, that is not a morning of June sixth that I can get you significant numbers. I need at least a week, week and a half on that, because it is not, it is not a two-minute process. It's not as simple as pressing a button, saying, because I, we literally have to go line by line to make sure that I'm getting the position, because we will have to amend the position control document that you have in your budget for every one of those positions. And I need to then verify that I've gotten each, I've caught each one, so that I attempt to avoid having to come back to you for errors in that.
Right.
She gave us a rough figure of what it would cost.
Yes, I gave you a, I gave you a rough figure. But to actually accomplish a budget amendment, we have to, by department, increase the numbers that are showing in the numbers that you have, and I have to increase the positions on the position control document. Because the position control document rules what we're allowed to pay an employee.
Want to schedule a special, another budget recap?
Not yet. I mean, if we if we feel that we want to do that, I hadn't heard where anybody feels that's really something that they want to do yet. I'm sure there'll be conversations among the council persons individually. I understand what Shane's saying, and want to try to increase it to another one percent or two percent for the employees. I get that. What I don't get is where we're going to find that. I haven't seen any place where it stands out, that there's going to be some large, some amount that we're going to have enough that'll make any impact.
I I was looking at our council budget, and, you know, I know we probably need to raise our contractual services, but I think we've got them up. It's much higher than than we used last year. I didn't know if that's somewhere that maybe we could look at. I don't know if, you know, if if we we need to have as much money in that specific line item. It's it says contractual services. I I just saw that the other day, and I just thought maybe that's something that.
Well, we put it in there, but it's it's not really, it's not really something we see as an expense regardless.
Right.
It's sort of like a, I look at it as a transfer from contingency instead of, we'll have it there if we need it. And I guarantee you, it'll probably roll over within the next, in the next year, but it's a safe, it's a safeguard measure. And we did, we did make a cut, about forty-five thousand, didn't we, and somewhere else?
And actually, it was our contingency.
Uh-huh, right.
That number has been reduced. You guys.
Okay.
Provide, you you reduced that number when we were trying to balance out the budget.
I was looking at, just to give an idea, so we spent, I think, thirty thousand last year in that specific line item. We're budgeted for fifty, but we've got it at two hundred thousand. Now, I didn't know if that, you know, we we might be able to get a little bit of money from that, just to help with maybe a half a percent of of salary increases. That that could be.
We need, we've got two things hanging over our head. One is we're trying to find an internal auditor.
Well, that that's not money for that.
Yeah, it may be, before it's over with, you know, as far as advertising or for, what do you call it?
If we need to contract one, it would come out of that line.
Yeah, it would come out.
Or if we have to get a headhunter, it's going to be expensive.
Well, the headhunter is budgeted in employment and processing.
Okay.
So that's in that line item. But if we have to contract an internal auditor.
And if we had some kind of lawsuit, we might have to cover that.
Right. So what of the past years have we, I've only got one year here. I've only got twenty twenty-two. I'm just curious on twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, and twenty nineteen, you know, what what have we spent in that specific line item? Because, I mean, it's if it's six times more than what we've spent last year. Six times. It's not four or two, it's six times. So I'm looking at everything else in the whole entire budget, and I I don't see where we have something that is that significantly much more. Now, like I said, I understand that we're, we need more money in it. I just don't know if we need that much more money in it. I that's.
I can provide tomorrow morning history of that account number if you would like.
I should have it right here. Hold on a second.
I did want to actually, and so during the during the meeting with the volunteers, they said that they would like to try to move forward for the next fiscal year, not fiscal twenty-four, but fiscal twenty-five for the the tax for their. In their budget is also four hundred thousand dollars for the LOSA program. That is not their top priority. There is four hundred thousand dollars in that line item, just to let council know. It isn't being spent this fiscal year. We put it in for next fiscal year. That is not a top priority for them. And so I'm I'm, you've asked me where there might be.
There's got to be an agreement between the county executive's office and the council of where we go. LOSA are tax differential.
Correct. So I I am just letting you know the.
I would assume you would want to do what they would want to do, right? I mean, I plus not, I mean, well, you know what? Maybe I shouldn't say that.
Yeah, you have to use a microphone. Yeah.
I mean, I I thought we were kind of all in agreeance that we would move in the direction that they want to.
We never heard you agree to that. I mean, if you agree to that.
Oh, no, I'm in agreeance with it. I mean, it was more so, you know.
All right.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, I mean, I I would be willing to move in that direction and.
So I I I did clear it with him before I stated anything here.
It's fine. It's fine. We just never heard from the county executive whether she was in agreement with that.
So I, you know, there is four hundred thousand dollars there that if council had a request, it, the request could go back to the executive.
You say, and you said you had a conversation with the fire service, and they're not?
Right.
I had I had a, I had that conversation also.
So they sat here.
But I mean.
That they sat here in this meeting and said that that was not their priority. So I am taking them based on the information that they provided, sitting here in front of council, that that was not the priority, and that was not the route that they wanted to go at this moment for funding.
Would you prefer to talk to them first, Joe? I mean, do you think that we should have that? I mean, obviously, we're not making the decision exactly striking it today, but I mean, is that something that you'd rather reach out?
That's up to the council. I mean.
Any conversation I've had, they're, they they are not happy with that program.
So.
They they really want to see a property tax relief. That's what they want to see.
That's what I kind of thought as well.
I have to reconsider the inspect code enforcement officer. Today, I went down the road by West Salisbury School on my way home, and someone had moved in their backyard. I know they got all kinds of appliances. What you call it, a trailer, not a trailer camper, untagged camper. And I've been going through the homes and giving Tony the the addresses, especially in like the Duke Drive, because I think he got a letter. And I emailed him also to tell him he needs to organize his neighborhood and have him come up here with his podium and explain, but we do need another code enforcement officer if Tony has three hundred and twenty-five square miles of territory to cover. And I hope you would reconsider that, because there is a need, because he's getting bombarded.
Is that in the budget? Is that?
It's not in, they pulled it.
Just one one code enforcement officer?
Yes. That is currently what's in here.
I've, you know, I've had to call, you know, the executive's office probably a half a dozen. I'm sorry. I've had to call the executive's office probably a half a dozen times in the past two or three months. I've never had any problems. He's always gone and.
Yeah, he has. He really has.
We need another ones, I guess, if he goes and does what he needs to do.
See, what what happens is a lot of repeat offenders. And he said in Somerset County, they have a repeat offender program wherein if he goes today and he texts in the court, and if they move the cars, and the judge says, well, are the cars gone? And they say, yes, they're gone. And after the court's over with, the judge will throw it out, and then when he comes back, the guards are back. See.
That's not the need for another another code enforcement officer.
But for six, the city of Salisbury has six.
Yeah, wow.
They have too many.
Yeah, you can't.
That's why they're, that's why they're so high.
What I'm saying is that that's not, I guess it's legislation where we need to do something if people are repeat offenders.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, not not necessarily another code enforcement.
He said that would help him. He did tell me that.
So, you know, to add another code, the problem with code.
Are you the legislator?
Yeah.
The problem with.
Yeah.
Code enforcement officers, they're great to have, but some of them can get a little overzealous sometimes. And then and then, you know, whenever I think of code enforcement officer, I think of BTK, the guy from out in Oklahoma that.
I believe when Lori and Keith were here, they mentioned that looking at legislation for the next year, as well as what could we do in fiscal, for fiscal twenty-five?
And she told me that. And see, she was going to divide it up with the other gentleman Meadows, I think it is. He was going to be part-time with Tony and part-time with the other person.
Yeah, so Clark, when he's out doing some of his other stuff, be set of eyes for Tony as well. So, again, I I believe Lori felt it was maybe a year early for, to add that position. But let's take a look at what we can do legislatively for those repeat offender concept.
I guess when you told him, asked him to cut the budget, they was cut out. Because she said she added it in the budget.
So, it, it was, it was one that did not make it all the way through the process. I'm not, I'm not saying it was one that, at that last cut, it did not make it all the way through the process. There were other positions that never made it all the way through the process.
So, I think we need to legislate repeat offender where they would get fined, like maybe $20 the first time and no more than $500.
So, again, any, and I will say it comes through my office as well, because it does get added to the bills. If we have repeat offenders who don't do what they're supposed to do, then we do have a contractor go out and handle the cleanup.
Another cutting the grass.
And that gets added to the property tax file. And so, and I read those letters as I'm signing them. So, the letter states that if they send in money, that's actually what gets relieved first before their taxes. So, if they have one of those on their account and they send in, you know, $300, and there's $50 of that, and they're expecting the $300 to pay their property taxes, they actually still have a property tax bill left to us because we, we clear the liens first before we clear property taxes. That is the policy.
I know it's off the subject of the budget, but Shani made some trailers. There are droves and droves and droves. You go down Nanticoke Road, and you go by, and all of a sudden, you'll see eight or 10 parked back in one area. I can't imagine.
That's true.
With the health department.
If they're tagged, we have, you know, if they're tagged.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, none of it looks like it's some type of well-thought-out and well-planned neighborhood.
These are people actually living in a trailer.
And you have to wonder, is there any control factor in place on all this?
If, if, if there are no restrictions in the, and I'm getting out of my area of expertise. But again, having lived in a homeowners association neighborhood and now living in a, in one that's not, if there aren't any restrictions, as long as you're, you have your vehicles tagged, they're not violating anything.
I'm talking about like if you go out near Hebron and Mardella area, and you follow the power lines back into the woods. They're, they're in the fields all the way along the power lines. There's probably 20 of them back there. There's no road.
Running water or nothing.
They're just, they're just, it looks like somebody's backed them up.
First thing, I guess, first question, what are you doing back in the woods on the power line?
Well, one is right on Nanticoke Road, 349, when you're going toward Byville.
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere.
And I know they don't have running water.
There's a bunch of them.
I wonder if it's, you know, during hunting season or something, you know? There's it all the time.
No, they're, they're like there.
People living in them?
Yes.
It's hard, I mean, I don't go up to them, trust me. I just drove by. A friend of mine called me on the way, they were, they had come back from Cambridge, and they saw this, and they said, man, have you seen this thing? And so, we drove out there and looked at it, and it's pretty surprising to see this kind of.
It's, they're living in the ones on Nanticoke Road. They really are. You see them, and it's right on the highway. And I know they don't have running water. And they're, they're allowed to live there. You know where it's at. Camp, some kind of camp.
Tom's tough, Shani.
Any other questions that I can answer on the budget, please?
Anybody here? All right. Entertaining the most to adjourn.
Thank you.
Did y'all have any questions at all?
Thanks, Pam.